Good morning, everyone. Certainly great to be here. We thank everyone for being here. Because we're all family. We do have a visitor in that we are... I asked the State to watch the council meeting and be here. The State gives us a chance to show how to transmit. You know, we do have Mr. Carter Frank Finkel from the Washington Post. So I'm glad that you're here. Thank you so much for being here. And thanks to all of us who are here. At this time, I am calling the meeting to order. And we would like to call on the Council. Pass it here.
Pass it to me.
Okay, if not, Mr. Davis, you can leave us with the invitation that we can stand and remain standing after the invitation. Councilman Davis will lead us to the right.
Thank you, Mayor. I hope that I have offered you the opportunity. Thank you for giving us a good day. Let's bow our eyes to the Father, our close. Oh, why is it unless you come once again on a brand new day? A day that we've never seen before in our life. Father, we just want to thank you for giving us our opportunity to call upon that with the right name once again. And by the God, we want to thank you for having us arrive this long ago to find out right now. Yet, our Lord, you look past all our mistake and our faults. You get out for the one who has given us. That reason, Lord, we just want to say thank you, Lord. Thank you, Father God. We ask now bless up on this council, this mayor, and everybody in this, in this auditorium. Bless them, Lord, by God. Lord, let us not forget all the city work. And Father, as I said yesterday, let us bless the whole United States, Lord. We need prayer right now, Lord, God. And you know what we stand here to be, Father God? And, Lord, we say, "A," and share your care with Father, in the name of Jesus. Rest in peace, and to Almighty God, our Father. Amen.
Salute. Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you, Councilman Davis. We thank you so much. We see that all of this, at this time, we do not have these presentations or affirmations. So we can go ahead and go ahead with the city clerk. Under the city clerk, at this time, council, I'd like to ask for a motion for the approval of the regular scheduled meeting minutes for July 1st court session as well as July 7th. Council meeting essentially, we're all here. I would ask that the federal council take this in one motion. So with that said, we have a motion for the approval of the July 1st court session as well as July 7th council meeting. We have a motion. I have a motion, Councilwoman Carter, to second. Councilman Davis? Do you have that? Mrs. Davis?
Yes, sir.
Okay. At this time, call for the vote. Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor Loeb?
Yes.
Proceeding on the council on unfinished businesses. Is there any unfinished business to discuss? Anything that you may recall about since yesterday's work session? Not proceeding on the resolutions. And I'm the administrator. We have resolution number 2024-134 to be ratified in reference to authorizing the mayor's and city manager to hire war grade contractor incorporated to repair the Sanitaris Sewer Main between 18th Avenue and US Highway 28 in an amount not to exceed $106,450. This is Davis.
Whereas, emergency work was required on a portion of Sanitaris Sewer Main between 18th Avenue and US Highway 28, which is approximately 6,300 feet west at the intersection of 18th Avenue and 10th Place. And whereas, it is necessary that this work be performed as expeditiously as possible to ensure public safety and stop the Sanitaris Sewer Main. And whereas, war grade contractor Inc. was hired to repair and replace approximately 420 feet of said Sanitaris Sewer Main and submitted an initial testament for this required emergency work in the amount of $106,450. Now therefore, be resolved that the City Council of the city of Fenton City, Alabama, does hereby declare the 18th Avenue Sanitaris Sewer Main repair and replacement an emergency and authorizes in reference the mayor and city manager to hire war grade contractor Inc. to repair said Sanitaris Sewer Main in an amount not to exceed $106,450. Pass the proof and adopt it this 10th day of July 2024, right by the 16th day of July 2024.
Davis? Thank you, Mrs. Davis. Council, we've all heard the reading of the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to ratify, please.
Motion to ratify.
All right, we have the motion. Councilman Davis may have a second.
Sir.
Second, from Councilman Gordon. Any comments or discussion? All right. Not at this time, call for the vote. Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor Loeb?
Yes.
Thank you.
Also proceeding on the administration council is a resolution and public notice in reference to the public hearing for the proposed 2024-2025 fiscal year proposal budget. Mrs. Davis?
Whereas, section 5.05 of the City Charter of the city of Fenton City, Alabama, provides that the City Council shall hold a public hearing on the proposed budget. And whereas, the proposed budget has been submitted to the City Council. Now therefore, be resolved by the City Council of the city of Fenton City, Alabama, that a public hearing shall be held on Thursday, August 1st, 2024, at 7:00 PM Eastern Time on the 2024-2025 proposed budget and that public notice shall be given in the Citizen News of the police Alabama at least seven days prior to said public hearing. Be it further resolved by the City Council of the city of Fenton City, Alabama, that the public notice attached hereto is approved and shall be advertised as provided hearing above by the city clerk of the city of Fenton City, Alabama. Pass the proof and adopt it this 16th day of July 2024.
Okay, thank you again so very much. Council, we've heard the reading of the resolution as well as the public notice. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion for both of those, please, to have a motion. motion to approve. I have a motion from Councilman Gordon. We have a second.
Sir.
Second, Councilman Davis. Davis, you have the motion. We have a second. Counsel, are there any comments, questions, or discussion? Okay. Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor Loeb?
Yes.
Thank you.
Also, council in the Building Department, we have a public hearing and approval of two resolutions in reference to the fixing of the building encouraged by the city of Fenton City for the removal of substandard structures in establishing a special assessment of under properties located at 1424 10th Avenue as well as 1215 20th Street. At this time, council, it's now the time to declare this as a public hearing and if there's anyone that would like to come and address the council in reference to the fixing of the cost as well as the demolition of these structures, now it's time to do so. Okay. Since no one has stepped forward, I am preparing this public hearing in hopes and I will ask our perfectly read master resolution. Mrs. Davis?
Whereas, the City Council of the city of Fenton City, Alabama, was requested by the building official of the city to authorize the demolition and removal of substandard structures at the following locations in Fenton City. One, 1424 10th Avenue. Two, 1215 20th Street. Whereas, the City Council on the 2nd day of April 2024, by resolution number 2024-63 and resolution number 2024-66, approved the apparent bid to demolish and/or remove said substandard structures located on each property listed above. And whereas, the city has given notice by certified registered mail to the person or persons last assessed for applicable taxes for each property and a notice has been published in the Citizen of East Alabama and a local newspaper of general circulation at least 15 days before this final hearing for the fixing of cost for each property. And whereas, after giving all interested parties an opportunity at this public hearing to address counsel on this, the 16th day of July 2024, on the issue of the fixing of cost in these cases, the City Council believes the fixing of cost has been determined and that it should be assessed against the substandard structures as named above and are recorded in the probate office to protect the interest of the city. Now therefore, be resolved by the City Council of the city of Fenton City, Alabama, as follows. One, that the final cost in the removal of the substandard structures at the following locations are as follows. A, 1424 10th Avenue, $8,800. B, 1215 20th Street, $4,800. Number two, that the city clerk filed a certified copy of each resolution with the probate judge of Russell County, Alabama, to establish a special assessment that shall constitute alienating of the Fenton City, Alabama, upon each property that shall be collected through the revenue commissioner's office for Russell County, Alabama. Three, that the legal description for each property is listed on each individual resolution for that particular property as taken from the records of the revenue commissioner's office of Russell County, PO Box 669, Fenton City, Alabama. Four, that the property owners listed below for each property are as shown on tax records of Russell County, Alabama. Number one, 1424 10th Avenue is Francis M. Bowman, 1507, 9th Avenue, Fenton City, Alabama, 36867. Number two, 1215 20th Street is Dolores Blanco, 1507, Clear Creek, Fort Mitchell, Alabama, 36856. Pass the proof and adopt it this 16th day of July 2024.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Davis. Council, we've heard the master resolution, the reading of the master resolution and I would ask that the federal council take over these in one motion. So at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion. We have a motion.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion. Councilman Davis may have a second.
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Carter. Any comments or discussion? Okay, Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor Loeb?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Proceeding on, council in the Library Department, we have a resolution in reference to claim various items as surplus on exhibit A as surplus for use cycle and sold as scrap or disposed of at the landfill. Mrs. Davis?
Whereas, the Fenton City, Russell County Library Department of the city of Fenton City has property which is no longer needed for public or municipal purposes. And whereas, section 11-43-56 of the Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended, authorizes the municipal governing body to dispose of unneeded property. Now therefore, be resolved by the City Council of the city of Fenton City, Alabama, that the attached described property as listed on exhibit A is hereby declared surplus to be recycled, sold as scrap, or disposed of at the landfill. Pass the proof and adopt it this 16th day of July 2024.
Okay. Thank you again, Mrs. Davis. Council, we've heard the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask this council for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion. Councilman Gordon may have a second.
Sir.
Second, Councilman Davis. Any comments or discussion? Okay. Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor Loeb?
Yes.
Thank you.
Proceeding on, council in the Parks and Recreation Department, there's a resolution in reference to accept an abid from central turk and irrigation for replacement of irrigation materials, components, and central control system for the Lakewood Golf Course irrigation system in an amount not to exceed $617,248.3. Mrs. Davis?
Whereas, the city of Fenton City Parks and Recreation Department wishes to replace the irrigation system at the Lakewood Golf Course. And whereas, the city of Fenton City has solicited seal bids as required under the Alabama Bid Law for sale replacement irrigation materials, components, and central control system. And whereas, the city received two qualified bids with central turk and irrigation submitting the most efficient system for the Lakewood Golf Course in the amount of $617,248.3. Now therefore, be resolved that the City Council of Fenton City, Alabama, does hereby assess the bid for said replacement irrigation materials, components, and central control system provided by central turk and irrigation for the Lakewood Golf Course irrigation system in an amount not to exceed $617,248.3. Pass the proof and adopt it this 16th day of July 2024.
Okay. Thank you again, Mrs. Davis, for the reading of the resolution. Counsel, as we've all heard, at this time, I'd like to ask the council for a motion, please. Have a motion.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion. Councilman Gordon may have a second.
Second.
Second, Councilman Davis. Any comments or discussion?
Can we get, I don't know, yesterday, when we took detail for us, but can we get time? I'd like to maybe just kind of tell folks a little bit about how they're going to do, what they're going to do, how it might take.
That's my answer, counsel. It's fine. This property is something that's been needed for probably the last 30 years. So we totally, the place is called their asset system from the wet well, all the windows. We're doing it now. We're pricing in this stuff. The wet well takes about three months to construct. This project probably actually takes until end of October, first of November, putting in all the materials again. So this is something we want to go ahead and get approved, get a lock in so we can get a set of order to get the materials on site and get it officially. Doors from high bones, real work, that work around the office of the mayor. And that's another reason why the course of play, not today, not that year, we just have to technically be facing something that's been needed. But I'd say, you'd say, a great turnaround was access to the doors was to play. We're about 30% by now. On our air days, it's just this is running. So I have 100% of the time. It's not really different.
I think what you said yesterday, how many heads would y'all put in?
Three.
Three and 26.
Three and 26.
All right. And it's going to cover everything. You said yesterday that you're going to cover the driving rain and some other stuff that's normally not covered and that sort of... Just big off, but it's just going to look pretty when you ride by it too. I mean, it's just going to look nice. It'll be a lot easier to take care of it. But we won't get the complaints that we get because it burns up. You know, about this time of year.
But it's much more efficient to...
Right.
Put the water where water may be.
This is going to find some of the vessels you explained yesterday. Do the last, do water better, more efficiently, won't be wasting as much getting full of that where it's needed and then go on where it's not needed and turn off set. So this makes it for a whole lot easier. I guarantee those are the ones that this one, y'all, y'all kept the pieces we had to put together and take together the bandmates and done a good job with it. But it's time to see the last thing you do tonight. I appreciate y'all bringing it in. This is more like two or three states playing. I would say it all done at one time.
We did all of them. We started at the wet well, the pump station, the number eight.
Did it give you any time frame? How long it might take?
Three months.
I mean, I don't...
Three months.
Three months. Okay. It's pretty fine to see the other one. It's pretty fine, but it's... Beware of these, and I guarantee you, I ain't played golf with them all time, but I don't believe you can... I just don't believe you'll get a lot of complaints about the incompetence while that's being done. Probably know what it's going to look like with the decisions. And one of the things I like, you gentlemen, yesterday, you know, I said we wouldn't have to water it. Oh, yeah, rain, you know, that shit's off. That's the signal right there.
It's an operating system that's going to be, like I said, that's going to be much more efficient. There's areas that may be watered more. We're going to dust that, water that, dust that. It's raining, just good to run on home.
Don't even get, don't have to cut them off. Right there, it's very tight to keep it going, which you got to do by keeping it back from somebody else. Like I was saying last night, 10 o'clock at night, I got to green, get watered, and some of that can just, won't have to happen. So it's well needed. Play golf, do it. It doesn't get started as quick as it can. We're going to allow it. Thank you.
I will mention, I know it says on the, on the letter C, it says that setting the vehicle certain turk and air desist for purchase or install new wet well. That's actually Eagle Turf, but the resolution provided, the mayor or if somebody has here to go resolution, they can use.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Tom.
Resolution provided. We want to go on.
Got it.
Okay. Thank you, Tom. Any other comments or discussion? Okay. I'd like to call for the vote. Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor Loeb?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next, on the Parks and Recreation, which has been spoken about already, is a resolution in reference to accept an abid for Eagle Golf and Athletics for installation of new irrigation material, components, and central control system at the Lakewood Golf Course in an amount not to exceed $329,690. Mrs. Davis?
Whereas, the city of Fenton City Parks and Recreation Department wishes to replace the irrigation system at the Lakewood Golf Course. And whereas, the city of Fenton City has solicited seal bids as required under the Alabama Bid Law for the purchase of said materials and installation for a new wet well. And whereas, the city received two qualified bids with Eagle Golf and Athletics submitting the lowest responsible bid for the materials and installation of the new wet well at the Lakewood Golf.
Mrs. Davis? Do you agree with the city? This is the resolution in reference to accept an abid for Eagle Golf and Athletics.
Whereas, the city of Fenton City Parks and Recreation Department wishes to replace the irrigation system at the Lakewood Golf Course. And whereas, the city of Fenton City has solicited seal bids as required under the Alabama Bid Law for sale installation of the irrigation system. And whereas, the city received two qualified bids with Eagle Golf and Athletics submitting the lowest responsible bid for the installation of the new irrigation materials, components, and central control system at the Lakewood Golf Course in the amount of $325,690. Now therefore, be resolved that the City Council of the city of Fenton City, Alabama, does hereby assess the bid to install said irrigation material, components, and central control system with Eagle Golf and Athletics at the Lakewood Golf Course in an amount not to exceed $325,690. Pass the proof and adopt it this 16th day of July 2024.
Thank you. Good answer. Completely. We can get a look in my eyes up here. Mrs. Davis? It happens. Counsel, we've heard the reading of the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask if there are any comments, questions, or discussion before I call for a motion, please. Okay. Counsel, we've heard the reading of the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask the council for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Davis. They have a second. Second, Councilman Gordon. Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor Loeb?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Proceeding on, council in the Parks and Recreation, there's a resolution in reference to accept an abid of central turk and irrigation to purchase and install materials for a new wet well at the Lakewood Golf Course in an amount not to exceed $48,467. Mrs. Davis?
Whereas, the city of Fenton City Parks and Recreation Department wishes to replace the irrigation system at the Lakewood Golf Course. And whereas, the city of Fenton City has solicited seal bids as required under the Alabama Bid Law for the purchase of said materials and installation for a new wet well. And whereas, the city received two qualified bids with Eagle Golf and Athletics submitting the lowest responsible bid for materials and installation of a new wet well at the Lakewood Golf Course in the amount of $48,467. Now therefore, be resolved that the City Council of Fenton City, Alabama, does hereby assess the bid to purchase said materials and install a new wet well with Eagle Golf and Athletics at the Lakewood Golf Course in an amount not to exceed $48,467. Pass the proof and adopt it this 16th day of July 2024.
Okay. Thank you again, Mrs. Davis, for the reading of the resolution. This council, we've all heard. At this time, I'd like to ask the council for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Councilwoman Carter. We have a second.
Second.
Second, Councilman Davis. Any comments, questions, or discussion? Okay. At this time, the council would like to call for the vote. Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor Loeb?
Yes.
Thank you.
Proceeding on, council in the Police Department, there's a resolution in reference to claim HK VP-9 pistols as listed on exhibit A as surplus to be sold to the Gulf States distributors, a federal license holder for $325 each. Mrs. Davis?
Whereas, the police department of the city of Fenton City has property which is no longer needed for public or municipal purposes. And whereas, section 11-43-56 of the Alabama Code, 1975, as amended, authorizes the municipal governing body to dispose of unneeded personal property. Now therefore, be resolved by the City Council of the city of Fenton City, Alabama, that the described HK VP-9 pistols as listed on the attached sheet labeled exhibit A are hereby declared surplus to be sold to Gulf States distributors, a federal firearms license holder for $325 each. Pass the proof and adopt it this 16th day of July 2024.
Counsel, we've heard the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask the council for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Gordon. We have a second.
Second.
Second, Councilman Davis. Any comments, questions, or discussion? All right. Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor Loeb?
Yes.
Thank you.
Proceeding on, council in the ordinance. This is a second reading. It's an ordinance to amend the code of ordinance of the city of Fenton City, Alabama, chapter six, relating to alcoholic beverages, section 6.60, B, hours of business for alcoholic beverages licensing, sales of alcoholic beverages to minors, except. Counsel, we have, and heard the first reading on the second of this month, would not ask to perjury read. However, at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion. This is my answer.
Motion to approve.
All right. Motion from Councilman Gordon. We have a second.
Second.
Second, Councilman Davis. Any comments, discussion, or questions? All right, Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor Loeb?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, council in the ordinance. It's an ordinance to DM next year 0.95 plus or minus acre strike of land lying in section 20, township 18 North, range 30 east, Lake County, Alabama. Chairman Holland, the owner. Also, council, we have the first reading on the second of this month, would not ask to perjury read the ordinance, but at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please.
Motion to deny.
Okay, we have a motion to deny from Councilman Gordon. We have a second.
Second.
Second, that's one more. We have a motion. We have a second. Any comments or discussion? All right. Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor Loeb?
Yes.
Proceeding on, council on the license application. This is the second reading. It's an application for an on-premise beer license, on-premise wine license, on-premise whiskey wine license, and billiards or food room license submitted by chasers, bar, and louts and eats L and L C doing business as string or sports bar located at 3211 Waterloo, King and June Parkway South Unit B and C, Fenton City, Alabama. First reading was also here on the second of this month, would not want to ask to perjury read. However, I would like to ask this council for a motion, please. We have a motion.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Davis. We have a second.
Second.
Second, Councilman Gordon. We have a motion. We have a second. Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor Loeb?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next, council. At this time, I'd like to call now a term of surrender.
Good morning, ladies and councilmen.
Good morning.
We have 40 claims on the agenda today. The first claim is filed by Mr. Carlson for a break. Mr. Gray had a tree that fell on his fence. And he assumed that it was on City Park. He told him it was not. It was on private property. You had your member of the land on the, the city, and we're in public work director saying that we will be is on private property. Therefore, we're not responsible for any damage to the spring. And I, I mean, we're denying this claim.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Grant. Counsel, we've heard the recommendation by my attorney. I ask that we have a motion, please, for his recommendation.
Motion to approve the recommendation.
All right, motion from Councilman Davis. We have a second. Second, from Councilman Gordon. Okay. Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor Loeb?
Yes.
Thank you.
The next claim is filed by, I think it's a motion. I, Mr. Pyatt was on Broad Street attempting to turn on the interstate. He turned too sharply, hit the curb, damaged his vehicle.
He turned too sharply, hit the curb, damaged his vehicle. Um, of course, the curb is not in the, you know, roadway, and, uh, he is claiming damages, uh, and based on everything that I read and, and then, uh, you know, under Alabama's law, uh, we're, we've identified an effect in the roadway or anything like that, and we were not, but that's not the reason I'm recommending to deny the claim. The reason is, you know, he just ran off on the curb and damaged his vehicle, and I'm recommending why not.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Grant. Yes, we've heard our recommendation by my attorney, may I have a motion? For the recommendation. Motion to approve the recommendation. Motion from Councilwoman Gordon, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Gordon. Okay, Mrs. Davis.
Councilmember Day.
Yes.
Councilmember Carter.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, the last and, uh, third one, uh, Mayor of council was, uh, claimed by, uh, third instance company, uh, ASO, Asander Davis, uh, one of our city vehicles, and back in the early year, uh, I recommend to deny this claim on two reasons. One, Alabama law says you can't find a nose plating in six months. They did not do this, and, uh, also they didn't submit three estimates required by city policy, so I recommend that, so now the claim based on those two.
I, Mr. Grant, council, we've heard the recommendation, it's time I'd like to ask a motion for approval of our recommendation please.
Motion to approve the recommendation.
We have a motion from Councilman Day, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Day. Okay, Mrs. Davis.
Councilmember Day.
Yes.
Councilmember Carter.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grant.
Thank you, council, so much, appreciate it. Thanks to all our departments, everyone that's here, our visitors, and the young ladies, we have two young ladies here. Thank you all for bringing them. And, uh, Mr. Franklin, thank you for being here, again, he's from Washington, we appreciate you being here, and, uh, we, we wear with bags and arms, they give us a chance to show how transparent we are, so thank you for being here. Council, is there anything, council member would like to add or take away? Not, um, Mr. H, anything?
I don't know, just, do I have to come out, uh, once you hear?
On August the first.
Yeah.
August the first at, uh, six, seven o'clock, right here. Please come out, uh, you know, get involved, community, which is sitting here. As always, saying we wear with bags and arms, we give us a chance to show how transparent we are. However, we do follow from time to time, as I was saying this morning, when we follow, we admit, we learn from it.
And try to follow.
We try, we try, we try. Thank you all so much, Mr. Parker, and we thank you, yes, sir. Oh, yes, I thank you, uh, Mr. Day. He just, uh, reminded me that the twenty fifth of, uh, this month, the last Thursday of this month, we will be having reception, uh, to award kids scholarship monies this year. We've been blessed and fortunate because of our community that will be able to give over a hundred thousand dollars in scholarships. And, uh, we have two very special ones, uh, that is, uh, very exciting that we will be awarded. So thank you for that, Mr. Day. Thank you, council, thank you, uh, department in, and certainly thank our community and, uh, city, allow us to serve, and, uh, we just thank you all for being a part of our community, and as we always say, we're going to be a champion out there, and we're going to continue to show it. With that being said, I'd like to thank City D B for bringing us to our citizens and city. And with that said, we do challenge you. Thank you all so much. Thank you.